One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're seeking motion to approve the minutes of the committee of the whole workshop held on January 25th.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. That motion carries. Presidential comments?
I just have one quick one. I've been asked by a couple of the trustees why this is on the agenda again. As we're all aware, or at least some of us, this will be the third time that this has been presented. I was, I met with one of our business people from town and asked if I'd put it on the agenda again. Reason being that he didn't think the last couple of presentations really reflected what the store owners had in mind. And I told him that with that in mind, this is why I'll put it on. And he's aware of the outcome of our last workshop, which was back in July. And so I'll just stop there and we'll see. Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Trustees' comments?
Question for staff, possibly Brian. And if we don't have the answers this evening, it's not a problem if we, you know, are responded to via email and the clerk copied. This is in regards to TIF districts and referendums. We currently have a TIF district. We're exploring a second. My question is, if a referendum is successful, that involves an increase in the levy of another taxing body. Currently, we have libraries coming forward. They did a very detailed presentation for us a couple of weeks ago. If the referendum is successful, it would realize approximately a ninety percent increase in their portion of the property tax of such buildings. Now, for units that are within our TIF district, does that increase go to the library district or to the village TIF fund if it's successful?
As I understand it, within the boundaries of the TIF as it currently stands, that would be captured by the TIF. For the other area that is not yet a TIF, because the ballot would be approved, if it gets approved, would be approved before the TIF district would even be up for a public hearing, then that would not be impacted by the TIF.
The TIF is not going to per se exempt the building owners, let's say, within Lockport Street that are in the TIF district from a property tax increase if this were to succeed. Those funds would go to the village TIF fund then versus the library, correct?
Correct. The, nobody is free of having to pay their property taxes.
The new TIF we're considering doesn't include the downtown business district, does it?
No, it does not.
So the two separate TIFs?
They're two separate questions. Correct.
I think you were saying they're both the same.
Second's not, right, yeah. Okay. But the one that's currently standing, essentially Lockport Street, downtown Plainfield, is the main one that's, I think, of immediate, you know, question. And you've answered the question perfectly.
That's as I understand it. I'll do some additional homework, and if I find out differently, I will be sure to let you know.
Okay, the whole board, if you could, yeah. Thank you very much, Brian.
Are there any other trustee comments? Not this would be the time for public comments. Please come to the podium and state your name for the record.
Hi, everybody. Good evening. I'm Vicki Palito. I live in Walker's Grove. I saw what was on the agenda tonight, and I just wanted to come out and say that I was against any video gaming proposal before, and I'm still against it today. It was true then, and it's true now, and it's going to be true tomorrow, that if you can't run a dining and/or drinking business by the quality of the product and the services that you offer, you are just bad at that business. Gambling inside of those kind of establishments doesn't bring any value added to the community or to what that business should be offering or selling. People are free to patronize businesses that specialize in catering to those who enjoy gambling. If you're a restaurant owner who really wants to run a casino, go run one somewhere else. I have zero interest in low-rent gambling, and I have less than zero interest in paying all the societal costs that will follow by allowing gaming in burger and pizza joints and bars just because someone can't figure out how to make a living selling food and drinks or how to be satisfied with their income for doing that. In the year and a half since one restaurant owner came crying that he couldn't compete in business without having video gambling, he hasn't shut his doors. So evidently, you can be in business without this. It will be unforgivable for anyone elected to this board to back turning Plainfield into a skeevy little stop off of I-55 that won't help offset the true costs of this sort of model. Backers and vendors who want to install and operate machines for video gaming were here before, touting a heap of financial benefit to the residents if the board would just allow it. They also claimed that restaurant owners would make about fifty grand a year each from it. Mayor Collins previously had said that he didn't see in their spreadsheets any real evidence at the time of the claim that Plainfield's citizens would profit much at all, and that maybe the backers should collect more data and come back another day. So here we are again. The special interests and support of gaming are just trying to wear leadership and residents down on this issue, and it's why they keep coming back. This board should just say no and mean it. We don't want video gaming in Plainfield, though a few profiteers clearly want it very badly. I'm extremely dismayed after I got here tonight to see the list of supporting businesses. Is this what this has come to, where having a business in Plainfield isn't even about trying to bring value to people for the dollar? It's just about trying to redistribute dollars out of some other poor sap's pocket into yours so that you can get a little richer while everybody else pays the price. That's just unconscionable to me. So I don't think we should keep encouraging this and leaving the door of possibility open for video gaming. Think of it this way. Is there some amount of money they could convince you was enough to sacrifice Plainfield's image and quality of life over? Isn't that just haggling over the price of selling our soul instead of saying flat out that our soul isn't for sale here? The people who want this claim they are in an unfair business advantage against nearby communities that allow video gaming. What would allowing this do but create a differently slanted unfair business advantage within the village itself? Let other communities debase themselves with this sort of thing, not us, not here. Keep video gaming out of our village. It benefits too few, some of them who don't even live in Plainfield, at a cost to too many, all of whom have to live here. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments? Not then we'll proceed with the workshop meeting. First item on the agenda is video gaming.
Do we have a comment or a presentation by, could you approach and give your name, please?
Yes, my, my name is Jay Darnell, owner of T-Birds on Route 59. And I didn't prepare anything because I wanted to hear what everybody had to say. And the reason I wasn't here at the previous two meetings is because the people that approached me, whether it was a vendor from outside of the Plainfield and a guy whose business was failing, I just didn't want to be a part of it. There are some opportunities now, and that's the reason I'm here. So over the last couple of months, I've met with every local business owner. I've met with the mayor. I've spoken with staff. And a lot of the things that she spoke of, I'm not going to argue against them, all right? The thing that it is, is what I want to really discuss is just where everything is in our community tonight. All right? And as far as a local business, I mean, I'll just tell you a quick story about what it's, it's taken me to build my business over twenty years. I've been here twenty years. All right, so can I be successful without it? Sure. All right, but that's not the argument here. So when I started nearly twenty years ago, I had a guy that came in. He'd come in every Friday, and he'd get beer for his shop for all the guys at his shop. And so over the course of years, you get to know him, you build a friendship, a relationship. And then he came to me at one point and said, hey, my daughter's in college. She's looking for a part-time job, you know, around her class schedule. So we hired her. She went to work for us, worked for us for several years. And about the time that she graduated from college to go on to be a teacher, we were looking for somebody to watch our kids during the summer. So she ended up being our summer sitter for several years. She built a relationship with our kids, and now our kids babysit her kids. And the reason I tell you that is, all the local businesses, you all know, were invested here financially. But we're also invested in the people in this community, just like you. In order for us to be successful, that's the way it has to be. You have to invest in the people in this community. So then when you start to look at what makes up our market, two of the things that you would look at is the school district and the park district. All right, and you learn quickly that they're spread out over several different communities. And then when you break that down and you look at who are we going to compete against? One of the areas that I compete against is Caton Farm and Route 59, that corridor there. And again, that's a different community. They play by a different set of rules than we do. Okay? So then when you lay out a map of the school district, what's located in it? Video gaming. If you lay out a map of the park district, what's located in it? Video gaming. And I get where we talk about you don't want it in the village. But really, one can make the argument that it's already in the village. When I was growing up, I used to take swimming lessons in that lake behind American Legion. The American Legion has it. They've been part of this village probably longer than anybody sitting in this room. And I know they don't buy sewer water from us, okay? So that's, you know, you can make that argument. They're not technically in the village. At this point, it's really just political spin. To me, what video gaming has become, it's become exactly what lottery has become twenty-five, for twenty-five or thirty years, okay, is it's an add-on purchase. It's an additional purchase. It's not an either-or purchase. People don't look at it as you're going to Las Vegas to gamble. And I'll give you an example. In the twenty years I've been in business, we have our lottery up front, and nobody's ever come up front with a bottle of wine and said, oh, you got lottery. You know, and I'm going to put this bottle of wine back, and I'm just going to play the scratch-off tickets. Just not how this works. It's not thought of that way. It's more of an entertainment dollar. And the other thing with those two, and this gets back to why I wasn't part of the last presentation, because it was basically either he was going to give video gaming or he was going to go out of business. Lottery and video gaming have become, without them, it's very difficult for a business to compete. And when I say that, I don't mean any, has anything to do with revenue. Okay? So I went back and looked and got some numbers in our store. Fifty percent of the customers that come into my store on any given day will add lottery to their purchase. Okay, and yet lottery makes up less than one percent of my total revenue. Okay, so if you take lottery away, and I don't want to give up any revenue, I don't. But theoretically, I should be able to cover that one percent. I should be able to make things work. The question becomes, if you take that away, are my fifty percent of my customers, are they going to continue to come to my store and just make that purchase and then make an additional stop to make their lottery purchase? And that's really the question here. We're all shoppers. Eventually, to me, you're going to find a place where you can go and make that one stop, make both purchases. And that's the issue here. It's not a gambling or whatever. It's what the market has become. You could take lottery and video gaming, and to me, they're not the only forces, but they become a force that drives your core business. And it's not the only force given. There's many other things that you have to do to be successful. But they have become one of the forces. And you could take, you can Google and get all the arguments, whichever side you want to be on. If you're against it, you're going to bring up it's a morality issue. You're going to be up exploits the poor. Somehow, it creates an additional tax. If you're for it, you're going to talk about the revenue it produces. You're going to talk about how it creates jobs. You're going to talk about how it increases traffic in your business. Those are the arguments. They're all out there. The thing is, is if you really take a serious look, open-minded look at our community, okay? Whichever our side you're on, whichever view you have, whichever argument you want to pick, to our community, it's really irrelevant. All right? It's already in our school district. It's already in our park district. It's at the Legion. It's six blocks from me. All right, it's here. It's not going anywhere. That's really the question. To me, the only thing I really would want to know from you guys is, because to me, it's already here. Do you want to support the local businesses, give them the products that they feel they need to compete, and then compete on a level playing ground? And that's really the issue. And I get the whole, the whole gambling side of it, all right? But it's something that you didn't create. Boards probably three decades ago have put you in this position by not annexing different lands. But it's here. And really, I just kind of would like some feedback. If you have any questions for me, really, just an open discussion. And I get that it's been through you before. But I think an out-of-town machine guy coming here was not the proper people to come present that to you. So if you have any questions, I'd love to take them. If you, I'd like to have an open discussion. If you feel what you've said at previous boards is all you want to say, I understand that, too.
I'm, I'm one of the new guys, so I'll be glad to jump in because I'm learning. So I, I was glad you guys showed up because I think discussion is always positive, whether it's good or bad. I think it's good to get it out on the table, and I'll give you my thoughts on it. I mean, really, I'm, as a trustee and a resident of the town, I'm conflicted. I mean, I understand the, the social concerns around the addiction and all that stuff. But I weigh that, you know, against allowing adults to make their decisions, which is really what this is. It's for people over twenty-one. You know, back to the other point, we're surrounded by municipalities that have it. So if there's people in our town that have that addiction already or have that desire, they're just achieving that somewhere else outside of our areas and not creating more business for our existing companies and businesses. I mean, what I feel is, I would be open to supporting it for existing businesses. So in other words, I don't want to put something out there that would attract new businesses, these video cafe type of things. But if somebody's been in town, they've been open for, I don't know, let's say, just throw it out there two years, and they want to add it, then that would be an option. But to say, we're going to give it to everybody that applies for it, and then we start getting people that are coming to our town, just add video machines, that's not what I'm looking for. So, you know, existing businesses, and I don't know what exactly, I don't know if it works in a liquor store, so I don't know if you would even benefit from what I'm proposing, but, you know, an existing restaurant or tavern, those kinds of things. That's kind of where, where I would be open to help existing people that have invested in our, in our village for, for most of them have been many years, as you said, so that's kind of my thoughts on it. I think the devil would be in the details. How would we, if we could work out those details upon what we would like to see and what we would allow.
All right, I, I'll pontificate here for a second. I don't often express my views of how I see Plainfield. I see Plainfield in the future as a destination. I see the downtown as a thriving business industry with a lot of restaurants, a lot of bars, a lot of entertainment, a place where people would like to go while maintaining the historic environment that we currently have. I think it's important to residents, it was to me and my wife when we moved here, the historic flavor that Plainfield has. It has maintained. A rising tide lifts all boats. If we can accomplish that and make Plainfield a destination, each and every one of you that's in the audience, as well as the other businesses that aren't represented here, will thrive. I mean, that's the goal of all of us, I think, that are elected to this board, is to make this town the best it can be for the residents, some of which who spoke out tonight, and the business owners, some of which who are here speaking out tonight. Now, there are negatives included with video gaming. I am not against it one hundred percent. But for the downtown business district, at the current time, I don't necessarily agree with it because the discussion will then be, are we putting half-walls in to surround it? Are we putting full walls? Are we enclosing these rooms away from the public? Then the gas stations will get involved, and they're going to say they're truck stops, having very few trucks come in there to fill up, to classify themselves. And I don't think you can delineate or separate current businesses from new businesses. I mean, what's to say that the businesses here are any better than the guy who wants to open up shop to compete with you? I don't think you can, you can allow a certain set of businesses to have the gambling license and a certain set of gam, or businesses not to have the gambling license. You open up a Pandora's box when that happens. You have unscrupulous vendors. The guy who was here last time, while I think he did his best, and I don't think you guys were well represented by him. You probably should have done a little more due diligence in having a better vendor or a better speaker at least come in. He came off a little bad to me personally. Like I said, I'm not against gambling as an industry, but it currently doesn't fit in my vision for the downtown. But I do want to support the local businesses in any way possible because you are an integral part of my vision for this town.
I've got a few comments, too. I have background of somewhat different. I've lived a lot of different places. Haven't been in Plainfield all this time. I've been and seen gambling in a lot of places. I've yet to see a place where gambling of any sort has really enhanced the local population. I allude to the East Coast, near Atlantic City. It's a trashy town. Gambling never did anything for that. Vegas is a slightly different animal because they have a lot of entertainment there that goes along with gambling. But Reno, I've been, and, you know, it's still a dumpy town. It doesn't really help. I view gambling of this type as tax. And you look at the numbers you gave us, and it's, you know. Illinois, by the way, is more heavily taxed. We're running people out of the state because we're so heavily taxed. And the net tax, if you will, is nine hundred and thirteen million dollars from video gambling. That's a lot of money, of which municipalities get five percent, you know, forty-five thousand dollars. Forty-five million dollars. If we had that much money, I'd rather see that money go to something that's productive. I understand your desire to build a business. How you do it on an equitable basis with the other businesses in town, I don't know. Trustee Rourke, I understand his point. You need to be, do it fairly. Well, it's very difficult to do it fairly. And will it really help you? No. I think the example I would use, again, from my own background, I used to go to Richmond, Virginia back in the sixties, if you will. It was a dry town. The restaurants there were maybe three restaurants in town that were worth anything. They opened up. They got liquor. Restaurants are phenomenal. They, they attracted a lot of business because of the quality of their food, and they made money on the drinks. So that, it can happen. I don't see that happening with gambling anyplace, though. Food and drink, yeah, it's a really good combination, and I try to build on that. I agree with trustee Jowski that we want to have your business succeed. I'm all for that, too. Every one of you is. I'd like to succeed. I don't think this is the right way to go, personally based on my own background and experience with it in a variety of different places. I think it's a tax. I think it's an unfair tax. A lot of people gamble who really can't afford to. I understand the fifty percent command and maybe get a Lotto ticket or something. Lotto is here. Lotto's not doing a whole lot for us either, other than what you get in your ticket sales. Big winnings generally go elsewhere. So it drains money, and I'd rather see us put money into things that build Plainfield to a strong community, if you will. And I think, you know, strong restaurants, furnished, you know, liquor, supported by liquor and so on, where it attracts people. I agree with trustee Jowski about being a destination. It is our goal. That's what the master plan for the riverfront was all about. We're trying to redo the area. So we really have a vision for that. And I find that this, in my mind, is not a productive way to enhance that vision. I think it'd be detrimental. I think we'd lose in the long run. It's personal opinion, so I do not support it coming into town. I understand the American Legion. I have no problem with the American Legion and not getting fabulously rich off of it, but it is there. So people want to go, it's there. All the, all your businesses and the others are already impacted.
Do you think that's unfair to some of the businesses downtown? That the American Legion has it, which is, you know, a half a mile down the road?
Well, they're not, I wouldn't argue that they're a business. Maybe you would, but I don't think they're a business. I think they're a service organization that responds to veterans of you. They have for a long period of time. And this is a way to keep their organization afloat. It's not, they're not trying to make money. They'd like to stay there and maintain their business, but they're just maintaining their presence, if you will. Personal opinion.
Yeah, I know. But I mean, that's, I mean, you just said that, that you didn't think it would help businesses, but then you just said the American Legion uses it to stay afloat.
Well, I've talked to, you know, tired Chief Bennett, who is running it there, and it's not something he's particularly inspired about. There is some income that comes. It helps him to stay afloat. They don't have many other sources of revenue. Bingo was another one.
Well, but they're, if you look at their, their growth over the last year as far as, and I can only speak to the alcohol because I don't have, I don't have the food part available to me, but they've had huge growth in their liquor sales. And, and if you look in, in just Will County, I've seen the numbers for Will County, the businesses that showed growth last year are the ones that had video gaming. So it does, and, and as I speak, what I don't want, I don't want to turn this into a debate or argue. So I mean, I'm just, when I came here, I knew we weren't going to get it, okay? But I just wanted to open the discussion to some of the points that were made. But if you look, like, I've seen the numbers in Will County, the businesses that grew last year were the ones that had video gaming. All right, so it does influence the other things that you have in your business. It's not, I guess the way to look at it is, it's, it's, you guys look at it as gambling, and I get it. But the, the consumer looks at it as an entertainment dollar. I mean, it's budgeted in. I mean, what's the difference between a person that spends fifty dollars at the movie or spends fifty dollars on a machine? It's still the entertainment dollar. And I get your views of it in, in, you know, so I don't want to come across that way. But I think there's, to me, this was more to kind of get you guys to start looking at it and looking at it through the future because it's not going anywhere. All right, and to say that it's, that you're okay with them to go to the American Legion, but you're not okay to, to go to Uptown Tap, that's a little tough to stomach if you're a business owner.
Well, we have no control over American Legion. They're not in the village.
I get that.
And you understand that already.
Right, yeah.
It's a non-issue. It's not something we, you know, actively promoted for them, but something which we understand that's there, and there's a, there's a logic for it. I understand the businesses in Will County may have been better. What about Will County businesses as a whole? Are they better off as a total? And I have to wonder about that because they are discretionary funds. I mean, gambling is not a source of found money. It comes out of the pockets that already exist, and a lot of people are on fixed income, like I am. You know, if I, if I spend it on gambling, then I don't spend it on something else. So if the businesses are growing and Will County have this, I bet it's coming out of some other business. Can't prove it. Just a personal belief. I just personally don't think it enhances Plainfield, though. I think we'd like to see Plainfield be a really great place where the businesses, restaurants and all that, as trustee Jowski's talked about, makes a destination. I strive for that. I think this would be, in my mind, a setback for that. Short-term benefit perhaps for you. Long-term, I think we'd all suffer for it, and that's, I'd rather see us put our money elsewhere. Money's limited.
What are some of the things that you see that are going to inspire the growth downtown? Because what I look at is, is when I started twenty years ago, Steve's the only guy left from twenty years that I could go down and purchase a sandwich from. You have that continuous turnover downtown. When I was on the board, I mean, we started the TIF district. That was the idea, to build a downtown. But when you kind of use just generic terms of our vision, what is your vision? I mean, the, the river path, that was done when I was on the board, the Riverwalk. You know, we're twenty years later, and we still haven't done anything.
I'm, I'm missing that. I was on the board. We did the master plan. I don't recall you being on the board at that time.
The Riverwalk was in our initial plan when we did the TIF district. But either way, I mean, that's, I don't want to get into other issues.
Yeah, okay.
My point being is, is, to me, and I went and spoke to every local business. And, and right now, in the twenty years that I've been doing, probably, you know, or you can go back to when Rock had his place, you probably have the best local business owners that you've ever had. And, and if they're speaking to this, and like I said, I didn't come here expecting to get, you know, four yes votes. But I think the discussion needs to continue and not just be closed-minded by some of the views you may have on what is gambling and what isn't gambling. I just think it's, like I said, I've seen what lottery has done over the last twenty-five years and how it's become instituted in everybody's way of life. And that's where video gaming is going. And I just think in the future, you know, I can continue discussions with the mayor, that it's something that I think this board needs to become more open-minded, too. And you need to really start, I mean, I could have brought a bunch of numbers, and it doesn't, you really just need to talk about what's right for Plainfield and what's happening in our community. You know, and I know we don't have control over the park district. I know we don't have control of all the areas of the school district. We don't have control of the Legion. All right, but the Legion has been, I mean, it's been a part of the village forever. I mean, you can say, I mean, you can use that, hey, they don't, you know, that we don't have control over them or whatever. But a lot of your arguments are based on the fact that they're not in the, in the village, so it's okay for them to have it, and you're not looking to support the businesses that are here. I mean, if it's okay for, if you're okay with Chief Bennett using that money to make the Legion, why are you not okay for another business to use it to improve their business?
You bring up the issue of how you get better businesses. One of the ways you do is increase the population growth. More people come into town. It makes this a very attractive destination. I think it'll help, you know, improve all of your businesses. We were on track to do that back in, you know, seven, eight years ago. Economy went to pot. We're still growing faster than most of the other towns around us. We're trying to make it a high-quality growth. We may have good standards as far as housing and so on. We made a level playing field there, so people come in, they know what to expect. It's going to be a really nice town to be part of. My objective is to look at it twenty years from now, hopefully I'm still around, and say, hey, I'm proud that we did those things back then because it's really paid off. And it's a judgment call. You know, I was elected to use my You know, I was elected to use my judgment. Well, I am exercising my judgment, right or wrong. I'm entitled to my opinion, as you, I'm sure you'll agree, so.
Like I said.
I understand the logic and so on. I just personally, my personal experience in a lot of different places says that gambling of that type doesn't enhance the kind of community I'd like to see Plainfield be, but that's my opinion. Not, not that I'm closed-minded. I'm not against it. I've gambled over the years and so on. I just, I don't find it a way to grow what I think Plainfield should be.
Are there other trustee comments?
Coming tonight. I want to clear something up. If we can go back about three minutes, I want to make sure I heard you correctly. Did you say that it was your opinion that we did not want to help businesses and care about our business owners? That's my question, my first question for you.
Um, no.
Because that's what I heard. Maybe I heard it incorrectly.
Um, I don't think I said that.
Okay, that was, maybe I misheard you then. Okay.
I apologize if that's the way you interpreted it.
Yeah, that's what it sounded like. You had said the trustee Lamb, and I let him finish and let him respond. Maybe I heard you incorrectly. The whole issue with gaming, obviously, the state has embraced it. You know, in Springfield, you have the lottery. That was supposed to be for education. Don't have the numbers in front of me, but I have a feeling it's not all going to education at this point. Trustee Lamb has some numbers that he brought up, whereas different gambling proceeds are supposed to be filtered back to the municipalities. That's all on the chopping block, and I do personally believe that that will be taken away in the future. Municipalities will see a reduction and/or complete elimination of our share that would come back if we were to embrace a gambling-type establishment in our community. I've talked to several economists about this different issue in my different paths that I've been down. Every economist, someone that has a PhD or masters in economy and economics, has said this is bad for the local economy. Now, that's somebody that has more experience than I do in this particular field, that has studied this and written papers about it, okay? And teaches economics. In addition, I've seen polling data within our community from a political action committee, not from taxpayer dollars. And those results came back heavily against having video gaming in different establishments and around Plainfield. It wasn't just in the village. It was more than just a village that was polled. In addition, I have to ask, you mentioned that you were interested possibly in gaming, is what it sounded like, and you have a liquor store. I think trustee O'Rourke had asked, how would you accomplish that? Would that be something, as far as I know, a liquor store can't have video gaming. Would that include, would that have to do with you maybe opening a restaurant to get a license, a new liquor license? Is that your goal here, just to be able to open that door?
I have an opportunity to expand my business.
Okay.
So yes, it would be a longer process for me. I would be back here looking for, you know, a different type of liquor license or an additional liquor license. Although I have no interest in doing it. I do have a tasting license, which qualifies me under the state that I could get video gaming if I wanted to. But to put video gaming in just a liquor store wouldn't achieve what I wanted to achieve. You know, mine was more geared around promoting my products through, a little more. Instead of just like my tasting license now, I can do the one-ounce samples. I would have expanded next door, expanded my business, and created a more tasting-type environment where it wouldn't be listed to, or limited to just one-ounce drink. That was kind of my ultimate goal. So yes, this is, for me, this is, you know, for some of the other businesses, they could start the process tomorrow. For me, I still would have, you know, sit down with the mayor and say, hey, these are my ideas, which works for you? And then come here and present that to you after that.
Okay, that's, those are the real questions I had for you. In regards to the riverfront, I'll yield the floor if another trustee wants to discuss different things that have been done to the riverfront. If at all, I'd be happy to jump in if they don't. But there has been a lot of progress, and a lot of volunteers have come together to put together a great, great riverfront.
Yeah, I mean, I think, obviously, it's, I have nothing, I mean, I'm all supportive of that. Anything downtown, like I said, I was on the board when the TIF district got voted in. So I've been, you know, supportive on the things that we've done down there the whole time. I will say this, though, when you, if we get to continue this, and not at the board level, but just as time goes by and you have those conversations, studies, and, I mean, I have, my major is economics, so I've seen all those studies. And for every one that you'll present that will back your argument, I could present one that will be from a pro casino-type that would give you the argument on the versus. You know, so there's, what I don't want to do is bring in a bunch of different things from outside of Plainfield to try to decide what we want to do here. And I think if you want to link studies to some of the ones that I've seen and read, I mean, you can do it to support either side of your argument.
I'll yield the floor. Thank you.
Mr. Darnell, first of all, I don't think anybody supports the food establishments more in this town than I do because I got the debit card receipts to prove it. But I will tell you this, beyond all, you know, the facts and figures and the state and everything else, we represent all the people in Plainfield. And I will tell you, I hear more times than not, thank you for not putting gambling in. And that's something that we've got to waste. It's not just whether it's my personal preference or not. It's also the response to the public. And I don't mean from a voting perspective, because, oh, my God, you won't get voted in next time. No, the point is, the people that did vote us in have spoken, have, you know, voiced their opinions to us. And I can speak for myself on that, to me. And I will tell you, I hear that quite frequently. In your case, now, if you expand, it's different. Otherwise, there's a difference between, obviously, the Legion being a destination of these people that go hang around, have camaraderie versus your store, which is very nice, by the way. But the other thing is, too, we can argue boundaries all the time. There's always going to be someone's business near the boundary of the next town that has something we don't allow, or vice versa. We, and that's just something we can't control. We can't control that the county board said yes to the American Legion, and they're that close. As you pointed out, the boundaries are zigzag all around, and one side of the street's Plainfield, the other one isn't. I just, I don't see us, I don't see myself voting yes for this because I don't think it brings the right image to the village. I don't think that's the kind of thing that you want, and where you're located especially. You're right near, you're a block away from the high school. So that's even, you know, I know they're not 21, and they can't come in there by age, but still, it's just the image. I hear it all the time, and I just would not support it based on, that's the feedback I'm getting from residents who have spoken out, such as Mrs. Pleto, but other people as well, that have spoken out about that. So I don't think it's a question of this board not wanting to support businesses. We're just saying this is that you have to find a better way to do that. I don't think that's your true competition, is the American Legion. I think, you know, I mean, your competition may be some of these other businesses, and it is tough in the business that you're in. Because I know you don't get the same, you know, the way distributors work and all that. The prices are high, and it's hard for you to pass along a better price to your customers. But I, there's, I just don't see that as being an option. It's not that we're just trying to be stubborn people. But, you know, we've worked very hard in keeping Plainfield going. We took this board at a time in 2009. Most of us were here, took this board at a time. It's absolute worst. And, you know, we didn't, we didn't take an easy route. And, you know, I just don't think that's the right, it's not the right image for Plainfield. I'm sorry to disappoint you, but I got to stand with my beliefs and what the voters want.
I had good conversations with Mayor Collins. I knew what was going to happen tonight. But I wanted it to be, the whole idea was to have it come from the businesses and not some guy that's, you know, trying to get his machines in here.
Sure.
And I just wanted to express, you know, from the business standpoint, and, you know, and I get, we're all, you know, you have different residents that have different opinions, just like I could, you know, say many people in my establishment are for it. You have to weigh, you know, we're the majority and the minority, and, you know, who your constituents are. I get all that. And like I said, I really, I really appreciate you letting us speak because I know it's been on the agenda before. I wanted you to hear it coming from, more from the local businesses than, you know, a machine operator and a guy that was on his way out of town. Because I think as things progress, and I think there's other things that will come with video gaming. And I just wanted you guys to kind of know where the businesses were in their view, that when it gets to that point, you know, maybe we can revisit it and not change your opinion, but kind of agree that it would be better for the businesses to have it than not. So again, I thank you, Mayor. Thank you for taking the time, and I appreciate you putting it on the agenda.
Thank you for coming in, Mr. Darnell.
Appreciate you coming in because the discussion is good. It helps to get it and, you know, exchange ideas, and it'll end up someplace where we can really actually help you perhaps. And maybe not today, but the more we have a dialogue, the better positioned we are to work with you. So I hope you continue to try to work with us. We'll certainly do our best to help you, whatever we can do, but this may not be the right vehicle, at least in my opinion. But thank you for coming in.
All the business owners also that came in. And I think, I'll use the term, I think you have a flavor of what the idea of the board is right now at the current time. And I'm sorry if it might not go along with your goals. Unless the board has anything else. I just have reminders for February 10th is coffee with the mayor. The 11th is historical preservation. The 15th, our offices will be closed for President's Day. The 22nd is our next committee of the whole, and March 7th is our next village board meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. That motion carries.